It is 6:12. Can I get a motion to open the meeting?
So move.
Second?
I'll second.
All with in favor?
Aye.
All right, my carries. Um, we will be...
Bluff set?
Any opposed? Um, all right, so, we're starting off with the, uh, is this the final one, Dr. Kenter?
We have.
This is our last budget presentation?
Next to last, we have one more.
We have one more, okay.
But this is the overview.
Yeah, this is the overview. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board. Superintendent Graves, Collins, I'm Dr. Philip Kenter, your business official, and I'll be presenting, uh, the overall proposed budget, uh, tonight as part of, uh, our wrap-up. And, uh, a lot of these slides you will have seen already, we're gonna talk about, about them again, and, uh, we wanna make sure that the community is completely aware of, uh, what our proposed budget is, and, uh, how we're going to raise the money to pay for it, and then how we're going to spend the money. So, I'd like to start with our first slide, and, uh, this is our proposed budget. This is the budget that, that the board adopted last Wednesday night. Forty-one million, eight-hundred-and-eighty thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars. It is a budget-to-budget increase of 4.95 percent. The property tax levy limit that we could have invoked was 4.02 percent. The board made a cognizant decision to approve an actual tax levy increase of 3.51 percent. The projected, uh, tax levy therefore is thirty-seven million, five-sixty-one, one-forty, as compared to what you could have asked the community for, which would've been thirty-seven, seven-forty-eight, six-forty-six. That is a difference, or delta, of a hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand, five-hundred-and-six dollars below what you could've asked for. And, uh, notation here for the seventh year in a row, that the tax cap has been in effect. The proposed budget and tax levy are below the tax cap, and you as a district continue to maintain all of your programs and all of your staff. So that's, that's really a wonderful accomplishment. So business officials are required to report to the state our budget in three parts. It's called a three-part component. And, um, and part of why they do that, they wanna make sure that we're not spending too much money in, uh, administration or capital, and where the bulk of the money should be spent with the children, which is the program component. So you will see that out of a three-part component, the administrative component, um, went from our current budget of three million, three-fifty-three to, uh, three million, four-hundred-thousand. Our program component went from thirty-one million, seven-fifty-one to thirty-three million, three-sixty-six. And our capital component went from four million, eight-hundred-thousand to five million, one-hundred-and-thirteen. And, um, business officials are also required to structure what's called a contingency budget. And, uh, did you want me to briefly explain how that works?
Good idea.
Okay. So, a contingency budget takes into account, should a school district's budget fail once, then the district has the opportunity to either put that same budget up a second time, or a different budget, or a lowered budget, or they don't have to do anything at all. Now, if they decide to put up a different budget for a second vote, and that budget is voted down, then the district goes into what's called contingency budget. And what that means is that we have to invoke the same exact tax levy that we currently have in the seventeen, eighteen year. And then additionally, we'll, we'll get the same amount of money with the state aid, and, uh, but then we have to make a very cognizant decision, what programs do we cut, or what monies do we take out of our reserves to supplement the programs we have in place? But one thing is clear, the state mandates to us that we have to take all equipment, all capital equipment, out of the budget with the exception of equipment for special education. So, the budget that you see structured here, the contingency budget for eighteen nineteen, shows a contingency budget of forty-one million, one-oh-six. It's almost, uh, well, it's seven-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars less than the budget we have in effect, and that takes into account, uh, the reduction of all the equipment. We would pay for that budget if we needed to with our reserves and the balance of our fund balance, to maintain all programs. The other thing that a district can do is look at its programs and cut all but non-essential programs. But this district has been wonderful, and from everything I've seen, the community completely supports the school, and, uh, so I'm required to structure a contingency budget. But, um, I think the focus is on the actual budget that you adopted. This is just a quick slide we took off the, uh, this OSC's website, the Office of the State Controller. Um, as you know, I have to report every year, um, our, our total tax levy limit, the, um, the tax cap calculation, the amount of money that we could've had, the, the amount of money that the board decided to vote upon, what the tax levies will be. So, this is just a chart going back to two thousand and fourteen, uh, what those recordings are and have been. This next, uh, slide is entitled "Mitigating the Impact of the Tax Levy Limit." And, uh, since I've been here, uh, one of the things that I've seen is very, very evident with, uh, my daily walking through the buildings, cabinet meetings, and, um, and, and just a lot of direction from the superintendent, is that we continually evaluate the efficiency and the effectiveness of existing programs, and that's based on enrollment, demographic changes, and mandates, as well as our local contractual agreements. So, we as a district continue to prepare a multi-year plan to project our future costs to maintain all the existing programs and services that we offer our students. And we also are very conservative in managing our fund balance and our reserves to, uh, to handle anything that might come our way unanticipated, uh, such as unfunded mandates. And, uh, last week at the NOIAC Civic Group, Katie and I spoke, and they asked for examples of that. You might recall last year, we were required to do the well testing and water testing with the lead, and any, any of the sites that came up positive, those, uh, water fountains or those spigots had to be changed, and filter systems had to be put in. That was a very expensive proposition, both for the testing and for the new equipment. And the year before, it was the emergency lighting, the battery lighting, and a lot of times these mandates, uh, come to us well after the budget has been approved and midway through the year, and the state notifies us that's gotta be done right away. So, uh, when we experience unfunded mandates, like those and many others, um, we have to maintain a certain amount of money in our reserves to accommodate that and deal with that, because unlike a business or even an individual, we just can't go out and borrow money. Uh, it's very difficult for us to do that. The, uh, annual, uh, review of our reserves plan to determine, uh, what will be used in each category. As we talked about last Wednesday, uh, this board gave clear direction that you want a strong balance in maintaining reserves, but yet giving money back to the community in the form of a reduced tax levy, which we did. And also in balancing the budget, we utilized, uh, some reserve money to, uh, to offset the, the budget, so that all the programs would be maintained. And, um, we continue, we continue to monitor the budget and, and look to see where we can capture any savings. Uh, Katie mentioned that we do shared services now. Uh, in the business office, we're always looking to see where we can get free shipping, discounts, whatever we can get for the district, that's what we try to do. Another point, uh, in this slide presentation that we all do, and my first day here, I was reminded of this, is, um, Katie said, "Always stay focused on the mission of the district." That was my very first order of business, know the mission of the district. I put it up here because I think it's important for the community to see and to remind all of us why we're here. The SAG-Harbor School District, in partnership with all the members of the community, is committed to equity and education. Its mission is to provide students with a safe, child-centered environment which fosters personal, academic, and creative excellence. This will empower students to become responsible and respectful members of a global society. As lifelong learners, students will be prepared to move successfully to the next stage of their lives. And I think you, you implement that very effectively with your array of programs that you have here, and the quality of the staff that I've seen. The other mandate that, um, is easy for me to follow, and I applaud both, uh, our superintendent and the district, are, are two approaches that I've, I've enjoyed utilizing in structuring the budget here at SAG-Harbor. One is transparency. We show everything to the community, I really, really like that a lot. Uh, and the other is the zero-based budgeting approach, where we, and we did this as soon as I got here, um, each department head has to start from zero and basically justify why they're spending their money that they're spending in each and every category. And, uh, it's an approach that's unique, because a lot of school districts don't do that, they just roll money over. Here, there's, there's accountability, and, and everything has to be justified. But what's also important, and I wanna say this, we're on camera with the community, every presentation is online, it's on the website, every slide is, uh, is open to the public to, to look at, to download, to print out. The entire budget is online, and, uh, and any changes that are made, those go online. So, we are a very, very transparent, uh, school district. And, uh, so between, uh, the approach of the transparency and the zero-based budgeting, and I reiterate this from last week's, uh, presentation, it, it's really wonderful that we have a district that is this evident to the community as to how the dollars are being spent. So, um, in addition to that, the, uh, our budget development process has, uh, included long-term sustainability and improvement. So we sustain and improve current educational programs while staying at or below our property tax cap, which we've accomplished. And, um, we really take a look at every cost, and the need for the expenditure, if it's needed, how can we obtain it at a lower cost? So I don't know if you know this, you, you probably do, I, in addition to being your business official, I'm your purchasing agent for the district. Every requisition for every item that we spend comes across my desk. I personally look at every single requisition. If I have a question, I kick it back to the principal, or I kick it back to the individual that made the request, but everything's gotta be justified. And the second part is that they must provide me with adequate documentation, that they've researched whatever it is that they wanna buy, that we're buying it at the lowest possible price with the best possible quality of service. So, when I tell people we, we look at our Ps and Qs, and something I learned in business school a long time ago, but our Ps and Qs are price and quality slash quantity. We're always looking at that. Are we getting a good price for the quality and the quantity? And we always look at that. And, uh, I, I believe we're doing that here, um, and so much of it, as Katie again mentioned, the shared services. We have wonderful contracts in place between BOCs and Suffolk County and New York State, so, um, and when we have to go out to bid, we go out to bid, and we look to make sure that we get the lowest price with the best, most responsible bidder that we can. The other thing, just to reiterate, uh, with the, back to the transparency, and I mentioned everything's online, here's the site, here's our website, um, if anyone were to Google this, it will take, and I tested it, takes them right to our, our, uh, budget, uh, portion of our website, everything's there. So, to re, to capture our proposed budget for eighteen nineteen, all the pre-K through twelve, uh, grade highlights, everything is maintained, nothing's been cut, all programs are in existence, everything's maintained. Katie has, uh, seemed fit to, uh, ensure that our entire staff continues with professional development, to make them high-quality teachers, um, that's, and she strives for excellence in all of us, and I mean all of us. She wants to make sure that whether it be a food service worker, custodian, teacher, or a business professional, uh, business official, we are all very professional, well-trained, and continue to have opportunities for training. Support with the STEAM program, um, Katie can probably talk more about this last point, this transition with the assistant principal position to the creation of the middle school principal position. I know that she spoke a lot, a lot about it last week. And then district-wide highlights, um, upgrading our network operation, and, um, the, the big, big thrust for eighteen nineteen, um, and we're dedicating money and resources and talent and research, is, um, strengthening our district's security measures, uh, and the safety for our students. And, and I know that Katie's taken the lead on that, she's been to a lot of seminars and meeting with our police chief and the other law enforcement people, and she's got some, um, very, very credible plans, uh, that she's putting together for next year. This slide you've seen many times, uh, it's just a recap, it takes our, all of our expenditures for next year compared to our current expenditures, and it breaks out into, uh, administration, program support, program for students, employee benefits, capital budget. We're looking at a, an increase from thirty-nine, nine-oh-seven to forty-one, eight-eighty. It's a one-million-nine-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand-dollar increase, uh, 4.9 percent increase, and I double-checked my notes just before, uh, starting the slideshow. And, um, it, it goes back to what I had mentioned when I first met everyone in my very first presentation, back to tail end of January. Most of this is driven with the, the increase in the benefits, particularly with the health insurance, as well as with the pension cost increases. Just can't be helped. Budget revenues, this slide you've definitely seen several times. Uh, we're looking at a nice increase in state aid for next year. Uh, we're keeping the payments in lieu of taxes, uh, steady, the same. I do anticipate a slight increase. Uh, red, non-resident tuition, we're expecting a very decent increase in income there. Uses of our facilities, miscellaneous revenue, interest, whatnot, we've got some, captured some money there. Our tax levy at thirty-seven million, five-sixty-one, one-forty, and, uh, that's the, um, the 3.51 percent. We'll be appropriating five-hundred-thousand dollars from our ERS reserve, and out of our fund balance, we're appropriating five-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand, so just a little over a million dollars in savings and fund balance are being allocated towards this budget for eighteen nineteen, which balances your budget of forty-one million, eight-eighty, eight-ninety-six. So now, the other thing that business officials are required to do by the state, we have to, uh, structure and put out to the community what's called a budget statement, which is a huge binder, and for here, uh, I had to make up three. And now that the budget has been adopted, one will go to the elementary school, one is maintained here, and one will go to the John Jamin Library. And in that binder is an array of, uh, it's basically, tells the entire story of SAG-Harbor School District. Our property tax report card, um, the academic report card of the community, uh, with the students and, and their grades, and how they did in math and science, and English and history, and our fiscal accountability summary. And again, these are, in those booklets, I've reviewed them, um, outstanding. If, uh, if you get the chance to look at your budget statement, it's an outstanding document. It's a little lengthy to go through, but it tells the story of your district, it's a great story. Yes, I can only reiterate again, you are all doing a great job, the administration, the board, the superintendent, and it's reflected in your, in your budget statement. That report card not only tells the fiscal story, but it tells the academic story of SAG-Harbor, it's a wonderful story. We have to put in a compensation disclosure notice, basically, any administrators that make over one-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars a year have to be reported in that for disclosure. And, and I, I, I also list the exemptions, uh, that people can be entitled to receive in the two towns of Southampton and East Hampton. So, this slide you saw last week, just to walk you through again, so, a, an expenditure, or what's called an appropriations budget, it's broken down by function and object, but it all equates the same, but it breaks it down so that you can see the expenditures in two different ways. So, in this way, by function, function, if you, if you think of it this way, function is like the macro, it's, it's the major categories, and object are the specific categories. So, object makes it a micro approach, a really finite into the finite detail. So, our budget is broken by, uh, down by general support, which includes costs for our board of ed, district clerk, superintendent's office, my office, and facilities. Then instruction, which are all the expenses for regular and elementary and secondary instruction, special education programs, extracurricular activities, clubs, and athletics. Then it's broken down by transportation, and provides all student transportation, whether our own buses, or we use a private carrier like Montauk. Community services, such as, um, our school guard salaries and our after-school program. It pays for debt service for our bond anticipation notes and our tax anticipation notes. You might recall, I spoke about those in a little more detail at last Wednesday's presentation, the debt service. And then finally, the inter-fund transfers, so that we have money budgeted in case we need to fund something that, um, falls out of balance, and namely, that's, that's usually your food service program. We've got money allocated to, uh, supplement the food service program if we need to. So here's the more detail, how it's broken down by object. And this takes you, will watch you through, personal services, employee benefits, contractual, inter-fund transfers, BOCs, tuition, materials and supplies, equipment, debt service, textbooks. And, um, and again, you'll, you'll see, when I talked about a one-point-nine-million-dollar increase from this year to the next year, take a look at employee benefits alone, um, eight-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand dollars, uh, that's a huge amount. Contractual includes, uh, ERS and PRS costs, plus contractual with the unions, uh, increases. Uh, we're in the people's business, that's what we do, we educate children. But if you take a look at, even though we've have, we have this increase, if you take a look from a percentage standpoint over the last three years, meaning where we're going into in eighteen nineteen, where we are now, and what we did last year, we're really, really very consistent. We're averaging seventy-eight percent of our budget is, it's, it's salaries and benefits. So for every dollar, if I were to pull out a dollar, I have one, yeah, I do this, I like to, so I have a dollar, seventy-eight cents goes to that, so that leaves twenty-two cents for everything else. Facilities, paying back loans, uh, copy paper, all the things that we pay for for a school district, and see, and that's the visual stuff that people see, but out of a dollar, seventy-eight cents of it goes towards our staff, and, and the staff support for our The impact of the 3.51 percent tax levy increase, uh, this is a slide you've seen before, I wanted to present it one more time. This slide is broken down for a million-dollar home, for the town of East Hampton and the town of Southampton. Uh, based on, on what we know right now, um, it, it walks you through that, uh, the increase is, uh, fairly minimal, let me put this, uh, tag on here. For East Hampton, uh, for a million-dollar home, people are looking at a monthly impact of fifteen dollars and sixty-six cents, and in Southampton, twelve dollars and twenty-eight cents. The breakdowns walk you through, and I've charted this thing back to two thousand thirteen, Folks that will be receiving the property tax rebate, this chart shows, uh, first of all, it shows the, the tax increase that we're proposing. So here it is again, if I go back, it's the one-eighty-seven, ninety-five from here, and if I go forward, I have here, so, for East Hampton, there's one-eighty-seven, ninety-five, for Southampton, it's one-seven, forty-seven, forty. Projected tax increase after the rebates, so, these are what the amounts are, and it really depends on what a person's gross income is. This, this is the chart, those are the discounts, the amounts, and, uh, for enhanced star, uh, for East Hampton, we're looking at, after, uh, one-eighty-seven, ninety-five here, and one-fourty-seven, forty here, just like the top, and what the rebate, after rebate amounts are. We have one proposition that will be put forth at the May fifteenth vote. Uh, this is based on, uh, a lot of feedback that we've received from the community, requests that Katie has received from, uh, residents, from parents. As you well know, that we had a transportation recently conducted, transportation study, and, uh, so I'll just read the, uh, proposition to reduce the mileage limit for transporting students. And, and it begs the question, shall the Board of Education of the SAG-Harbor Union Free School District be authorized to reduce the district's current policy for transporting students in grades kindergarten through twelve, from the existing one-mile minimum limit to a one-half mile minimum limit at an additional annual cost in the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year of zero dollars? So that's the question that will be put forth in the proposition.
It's on this, you said?
It's on this slide, okay. I think this came up either the last, by the way, thank you again for reviewing it. Um, I, I think this question came up either the last budget session, the one before, about the language on this, and I don't remember clarity on it, so I just wanted to reconfirm. This says a zero cost, but that's estimated, right? An estimated zero cost?
There was a high level of confidence that it would be zero.
But there was a high level of confidence. If this gets passed, does that mean if there is any cost, we can't spend the money? Because they only said that they'll approve it at zero cost?
Our attorneys crafted this language, so I, I don't think they, I don't think they boxed us in like that, but we can...
Okay, I just wanna confirm that if, you know, we find out it's gonna cost us a grand to do this, that we don't have to cancel it?
That we, our hands aren't tied.
Our hands aren't tied, so just, you know, I, it, just wanna get clarity on that, please.
Thanks.
I, I think, uh...
I know, it's a legal question, so I wouldn't expect an answer now, but it would just be good to know.
Yeah, okay, good point, thanks. This is a chart you've seen in the past years, just wanted to update it and get it out to you again. Historical budget vote results, pretty interesting, uh, the amount of people that come out and vote. You run consistently, two-thirds of the people in this community consistently vote in favor of your budget, and those are the actual numbers. And, you can see the tax levy increase, last year was 3.49 percent, this year it's 3.51. When you average all of those together, going back to oh-four and oh-five, the average has been a four percent increase, uh, overall. This slide just captures what's happening, what's left on deck. Uh, May seventh is our Board of Education budget hearing, an educational meeting, so that will be my final presentation, I'm gonna do it one more time. I'll do a little bit of a variety from what you've seen so far, we'll, some of the same slides, maybe a couple of new ones, so we'll do one more. And, uh, May fifteenth is the annual, uh, budget vote and the election, and then, so I have that in bold, that's gonna happen between seven AM and nine PM at the Pearson High School Gym, and that's on Tuesday, May the fifteenth. And, uh, this is a slide that I found last year, and I really liked it, wanted to include it, and, uh, and the reason why, and I wanna just, you know, most people would just, ah, thank you, and then, I just wanted to put this slide in to give my thanks to my colleagues, my staff, Katie, you as a board, and, and everyone I've met, everyone's been so supportive. Uh, this, structuring a budget of this magnitude and this detail, it truly takes a team effort, everyone working together. We talked about zero-based budgeting, getting people, get their budget down, justifying things, getting proof, I've got another whole binder just loaded with stuff. And all of us working together, you have that here at SAG-Harbor, you have a nice team, all working together, and that includes all of you, you're part of that team. So, thank you.
Thank you, Doc.
And that's it.
All right. Any questions about the budget overview? Let's take a very short break, and we will come back to the, um, business meeting, we do, because we do have a conference with our, um, attorney. Yep, and we'll, uh, we'll just slip into that room at the time, but we'll have to, um, open first and, and make that motion, so.
What, what time, are we on with minute seven? And if we are, then it'll be good to open, like, if... And if we are, then it'd be good to open like a five up so that we can get in there in time.
I'll see if he can, we're a little bit early. So, I'll see if he can do it a little bit early in case we have, you know, give us a little wiggle room. So, we'll take a five-minute break, I'll reach out and ask him to vote.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to get a motion to convene to executive session at 6:49 to discuss contract negotiations with our school attorney and also to discuss the appointment of a particular person.
Remove. Second.
Come on. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Let's just step back into the back room and we'll get a tom call. Can I get a motion to reconvene from executive session? Thank you. All those in favor? And your votes? All right, motion carries. Let's see, where are we? We are at Public Number 1. Is there anybody that would like to speak at Public Number 1? I have to go for my spiel. Moving on, Superintendent's report.
So, if we can start with our principals' reports. And I think that would be Nichols.
Who goes first?
Mr. Nichols, you do.
It might be you.
Grab the mighty clicker and we've got a boom mic up there for you now.
Where...
Keep going. Yep, there you go.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'll go through this pretty quickly. Past events, we had our National Honor Society induction ceremony on the 27th. Whaler Day, which is like school spirit day, was the 28th. We announced that event as the morning of so that the students are not aware of the event in advance and can't come up with any devious plans. The IB, Visual Arts Exhibition's out in the lobby. It's pretty wonderful. Ms. Marchesella and her students, her higher-level students, which are the two-year sequin students, organized that. The ELA testing, Ms. Cariero took care of managing that. That went pretty well. The opt-outs were, the highest percentage was in eighth grade, followed by seventh grade.
Fifty-six, thirty-four, and sixth grade?
Yeah, those sixth grades, the participation was pretty strong. We had our conversations with administrators meeting on the 20th, which I believe was Friday. Future events, we've got the High School Musical. I think they're rehearsing right now, coming up this weekend. IP and AP exams, that's almost entirely IB. We have two AP exams, I believe, that are administered. Then, we have New York State math testing, middle school orientation, which is sort of misleading because there are like four or five different steps to that process, correct?
That was just the parent.
And you've had other things throughout the year.
Yeah, Miss Annapolis is going to be meet, yeah. Miss Annapolis meets with the children and then brings them over and then meets with them again.
Sixth-grade trip, I assume that's the West Hampton Beach Performing Arts Center.
They're going to see the Lightning Beach, which is, coincides with the curriculum in sixth grade, which is very interesting.
Eighth-grade trip to DC, middle of May. And we have concert season, latter half of May. And the next conversations with administrators, the end of May. Here are some photos, students taking the pledge. Those two were announcing where the senior members are attending college. I think that's Isabella, DeRusa, and Grady Burton. There's me, you can tell I've got big teeth over on the right, big smile. Mr. Guyan, some students. High school musical rehearsals.
The production is going to be fabulous. Make sure you get your tickets early because I think there's just going to be standing room hall. It's really, there's singing and dancing, and it's extraordinary.
Where's Mr. Bramlop, is he here? Did a great job with this, once again. I mean, we don't really talk about it, but he pulls this all together and just like, he's like a cheerleader organizer, and the kids have a blast. And like 98% of the credit goes to Eric, so, good work.
Thank you.
Mr. Malone?
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Good evening, everyone. So, we'll spend a few moments just going over some of the past events at the elementary school over the last month or so. Thanks, as always, to our PTA for supporting wonderful opportunities for the students and families at our school. The annual book fair is a great way for children to enhance their independent reading libraries. And once again, I think it was a huge success. All of us that are familiar with the morning program know that not only does it give our students an opportunity to share our talents. As an example, we had our dance club do a jazz performance on the 27th. But the day before, on the 26th, the Pearson Robotics Team came by and showed off, showed off their robot and ran through the exercise that they would eventually be doing at their competition. So, that was a thrill for the elementary audience and any of the adults that were in attendance loved it as well. The 28th, we had our pre-kindergarten registration. That day, Ms. Duran in the PPS office host families to come in and help them with the registration process. Registration is still open for pre-K, but that's a day that families get that direct assistance. But if you do know of any families that are interested in learning more about the pre-K program or our kindergarten program, they can of course get in touch with Ms. Reynoso or me at the school. Our pre-K group, which you know is currently housed here in the Pearson Middle School, often takes advantage of the facilities in the high school building. One of those spaces being the auditorium. And our group has spent time up on the stage. Ms. Ryers' class did a performance a while back. And on the 28th, Mrs. Romeo's class did bears coming out of hibernation and culmination of a study that they have been working on. April is Poetry Awareness Month, and at the elementary school, we've linked a study and recognition of poetry with our Kindness Counts theme this year. And thank you to Mrs. Bukowski, our reading specialist. She's been sharing some wonderful poems from a book, Lend a Hand by John Frank. Mr. Nichols spoke about the ELA testing. And just this past Saturday, while it's not a school event, it's a community-wide event. A lot of the elementary students and their families participated in Katie's courage walk. A few pictures with the beautiful weather now. A lot of classes are enjoying our outdoor spaces, most known as the greenhouse and the beautiful gardens. There's been a lot of work going on, and that's great. This is a shot at the bottom of Clarence Shepard, who is the guest photographer who spends time in our school as a gift from the Rudishan Trust. And he works closely with our fourth graders as well as our fifth graders and our teachers. And they often spend time outside taking beautiful photographs. This we wanted to mention because this was the efforts of one particular fifth grader, a gentleman named Ethan Bouchard, came up with the idea to have a three-on-three basketball tournament. He had so much fun with the Sag Harbor youth group this winter. He didn't want the groups to end and thought his classmates would enjoy putting together like a, kind of a marchman, this bracket-type tournament. It took us a while to get it off the ground, but this past week, the children had teams three-on-three, and they played all week long. Actually, just today was the championship. But what was really special is Ethan had been hearing about the Flying Point Foundation for Autism Awareness. It's a group out here that does a camp in the summer for children with autism or siblings of children with autism. And he thought it would be a great idea to have kids that played in the tournament and anybody that wanted to donate, give some money to this great cause. So, it was a lot of fun, and we supported a wonderful foundation. There's some shots of the kindergarten, pre-kindergarten show and the book fair. It's good fun, good fun at recess. Oh, actually, this was kind of neat. In the middle, on the day that we came back for the unused snow day, we turned our gym into a cafeteria to give the students a feel of what that would be like. Our custodians rolled out the cafeteria tables, and we did cafeteria day. And that was, that was pretty fun. Some upcoming events. Our PTA is working with the Safe and Sag Harbor Group and putting on a presentation for alcohol and drug prevention on May 1st. And that will be housed at the elementary school beginning of 5:30. Next week, we move into the New York State math testing. The big event in the middle of May, the 14th, is our open house, and that will start at 6:30. Math fair on the 18th, of course, our spring concert, which will be at the end of the month on the 24th. And our kindergarten group is starting to get ready for the annual show, which is June 1st at 1:00 PM. This is, oh, this is the robotics team at their competition.
Thank you. One more there.
Thank you. Good evening. Very briefly tonight, in terms of security, working with Marcus, our facilities director and Superintendent's been a part of a process with a cluster of East Hampton districts. And the goal is to come up with the 2A radio solution that we'll be able to effectively implement to better serve our security and to be able to be in touch with the authorities as necessary. Also, looking at some new opportunities for improving communications, district's website and our mobile presence along with some other folks here. I know this is a big issue, is constantly trying to improve our communication. So, it is an ongoing process, and I hope to be able to report back soon on some pretty exciting things that we're working on. In terms of staffing, I'm still down staff member. It seems like it's never-ending. But we are actually making progress. We finally decided that we were going to go with the Network and Systems Technician title rather than the Computer Lab assistant. I think I spoke about that once before and what the advantages are of that. But we finally got the approval from civil service. We sent out what are called canvas letters to 155 potential candidates on the list. And as of this afternoon, we heard from two. So, we'll see, but they just went out recently, and we'll see how that goes. But ultimately, we'll be interviewing based on that. Hopefully, we'll be able to come up with a candidate to fill the position. Sag Harbor is a very unique place, that's all I'll say. The generosity of the parents never ceases to amaze me, both in their time and in this particular instance, their money. As I mentioned once before, we have a parent at the elementary school who has donated a very large sum of money with the specific idea of, I can use it any way I need to, but we did discuss 3D printers, and that is what's going to happen. But what was great about it, he really said, if that's not what's best for the kids or if that's not what's needed for their instruction, he was okay with that. But we did agree upon this. And after discussion with the new tech teacher here, he's thrilled to be getting that. And we talked to Mr. Malone about putting one in his library so the kids will share. So, for this donation, we're going to be getting two of these printers. And these are really very robust printers. They're high-end 3D printers. They've gotten tremendous reviews, and in talking to people, this is definitely the way to go. And it's very hard to see, I wish the lights were off. But Mr. Malone also pointed out that you can print multiple, depending upon the size of the items, you can print multiple items simultaneously. So, because one of the thoughts was maybe we should get less expensive printers and have more of them so kids could have more direct access. But in the long run, the downtime associated with the less expensive ones doesn't warrant doing that. So, we'll go with the one that we can produce multiple things at the same time. So, hopefully, we'll be moving forward with that very soon.
Good evening, everybody. We have our athletic past events wrap up. This is some of the postseason honors that were bestowed upon our winter athletes. I apologize, we do not have the swimming awards up there. We received numerous of them, just at press time, I didn't have them. We had one award which we haven't had in a long time was EJ Burke. This year, he decided that this was going to be his first year of varsity basketball. And he had a tremendous year as a senior. Upcoming events, we have, we've been working towards setting up, not only finishing up this year, but moving towards next year. As you can see, we've already set our dates for the sports physicals. Tomorrow will be our first middle school lacrosse game in school history. So, it's pretty exciting, the girls are excited. We have 19 of them. It's the first, as far as I know, it's the first lacrosse game we've housed here at Pearson Middle or High School. We've also moved past the physicals. We've already set a date for homecoming, tentatively, the weekend of September 22nd. And again, I say tentatively only because if section changes some things with the scheduling, we may have to bump it a week. But right now, I would say I'm 90% certain that will be our homecoming weekend. And on 10/20, on October 20th, we're going to be having our fourth annual volleyball tournament. That's a tournament that Coach Fisher started three years ago. We invite a lot of the local schools, and it's really just a tremendous event. I think that was it, am I correct? Oh, and I'm getting some updates as we speak. Our undefeated baseball team won tonight. And I don't know about the wardrobe tennis match that was taking place today. One of our, we got in a contest with West Hampton. I think they were going to continue that match today. So, well, hopefully, if we win that match, we'll get a share of the league title. And I think this is...
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about the elementary project that's kicking off, June 23rd. I'm just switching over to a different power plant. Yep, should be, okay. Okay. These are slides, a few of these slides you've seen before. We're laying out, the project is the field here, the plaza work, as well as the court over here. That's the existing condition, of course. Just a drawing right here, what we're looking at doing here. That's what was sent out to the state. This is a blow-up of the plaza area. We're looking at repaving this plaza area, some fencing. This line right here is the fencing that we're looking at for safety reasons. Relocating the tree. This is the court. The court is going to have a handful of games here. We're looking at volleyball, pickleball, kickball, basketball.
Four-square.
Four-square, ten-foot chain link fence, secure the area. This was our timeline. So, if you look down to where we received the bids on April 10th, and we had our bid reading. We opened the bids, the lowest responsible bidder, we were really happy with the numbers. You'll see that on the next slide. We met with the lowest responsible bidder the following day, and we started doing background checks on him. And he turned, he fit the bill, and we would like to award to him this evening. The start date, we'll talk about contracts the first week of May and have our kickoff meeting because we're breaking ground June 23rd. So, it's going to come up pretty quick. Reason why we are looking to award tonight is because it gives the contractor time to gather his supply, secure his workforce, and be able to break ground on the 23rd. The court and the plaza, we'll be able to play on that by August 31st if we maintain schedule, which I don't see why we wouldn't. The field itself, we would have to wait just an additional to the 24th to give it time to, kind of similar to what we do at Pearson Field over here.
Oh, great.
You can see that the budget was, for the elementary, for the project was $660,000. It came in at 637, 484 and 28 cents. We have, if you add up this budget line here, we're looking at 1.450, 584, all right, as our total. Our actuals is... Our actuals is a lot less, it's one million, three twenty-one, zero eighty-three and twenty-eight cents, which is gonna leave us a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-two cents for additional work. If you look at the, okay, right here, we're looking, I'm gonna go back and forth between two slides here. First, let me just show you the, the base bid. The base bid came in at six thirty-seven, four eighty-four and twenty-eight cents. We had some add alternates built in. Add alternate one was the brick walk replacement. Okay, the brick walk replacement is this area right here. Okay, it goes from Hampton Street down. The bricks are, were being undermined, they're popping, it's, it's rolling, it's settling, it's really a safety issue. Let me just go back to this page. Alternate two, they made a mathematical error on that one, so we couldn't award that one because he was way under on that, so we weren't, we're not able to award alternate two as of yet. Alternate three, alternate three is this wood guardrail over here by Hampton Street again. It, it's a giant piece of timber that's gonna go in here to add protection from the playground.
You have to call it a guide rail, not a guarded rail.
A guide rail?
You have to call it a guide rail.
A guide rail.
Yeah, New York State Department of Transportation got in hot water over that.
Was that right?
Yeah, so we had to change them from guardrails to guide rails.
We're looking to protect our kids.
A little bit of, protect our children.
Going back, the gravel path extension, this is that little area around the track, the, the field here, we can't call it a track, it's a gravel walkway path. It's gonna be the base, pretty much, in case we wanna move forward with anything else. So, that's gonna be our base, it's gonna be a gravel walkway. Right now, there's nothing, it's dirt. We talked about multiple different, different materials, but the gravel, I think, just would talk with the architects and the engineers, that would give us a base in case we wanna do anything further. And the tree and shrub planting, sorry if I'm giving you a headache with the back and forth, this is this area right here, we're gonna plant some shrubs here. Now, the great thing, add alternate two is this area here that we're not awarding. If you see our total base bid, we have six hundred and eighty-three thousand, two oh nine and twenty-eight cents down here. If we award alternate one, two, I'm sorry, one, three, four and five, we're spending about forty-five thousand, we're spending forty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five Available funds after awarding would be eighty-three thousand, seven seventy-five and seventy-two cents, which gives us enough money, which we, we got an estimate of fifteen thousand dollars to replace that alternate two. If we choose to take that add alternate, then our available funds would be sixty-eight thousand, seven seventy-five, so we have some money.
I'm sorry, so we can't put alternate two in?
Well, alternate two, we could do as a change order later on down the road or we could get some additional price from other vendors perhaps to make that happen, but I would, I would lean towards the, talking to the contractor that's on site first, seeing what he budgeted for and we did receive budgets of fifteen thousand dollars to do that area, so if he's under that, we'll, we'll come to the board and ask Superintendent Graves and see what direction we wanna go in.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have two questions.
Yes.
Can you just go back to the map for a second, please?
Yep, this one?
Yes.
Okay.
So, currently, PE usually uses, and maybe in recess too, there's a, there's a path that goes sort of down by that.
Right, it goes like this around here, right?
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Right.
So, I just have a question, what, are we, can we consider looking into, you know...
Expand it?
Yeah, like something that would go down there to make that a really nice sort of kind of parkour type trail.
Absolutely, we could definitely talk about that, maybe like this gravel path, like make it kind of expanded?
Well, and that was my second question.
Yes.
So, is it possible that they can explore other options other than just gravel that we could all look at in terms of being something that's kind of more like a parkour type thing, that's natural, safe for the kids and maybe, so if you're running a new trip, you're not falling on gravel?
Okay.
But not a, sorry Stephanie, not like, you know, those synthetic type of things.
No, 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 but wait a minute, in all seriousness, we talked about this, I thought we, we said, I don't wanna open up a can of worms, I thought we said no to the gravel because we felt the kids would roll ankles and fall. I don't remember correctly, don't quote me.
That was the five R, the wood chips, because it's a soft, it was a soft surface.
The architect was pretty firm on that this, it's not like heavy gravel, it's really like a light stone.
It's the pea gravel.
R C A.
Would be the, would be the safest.
Okay.
And that was his very firm recommendation as our landscape architect to go with that. You know, once it's in, but right now, they call it creeping of the scope of the work right now. We, we really can't spend anything more, as your superintendent, I'm saying, if this is, we've already bid out the work, the bids have come in.
Right, these are the numbers, right.
So...
These are the actual numbers, so, yeah.
You know, as we get further along, but this is a, I think this is outstanding that add alternates you usually don't get, once you go out to bid, you usually, those are things you wish for. We got all the items that were on that, were on all that add alternate. So, I know you lost your synthetic turf, but what we're gaining at the elementary school is wonderful.
Yeah, this is tremendous, yeah, it really is.
Yeah, it's wonderful.
But I guess what I don't understand though is the gravel path that goes around that field, from what I understand, it's not the way, at least when my kids were in the elementary school, it's just not the way they used it, they have that whole trail that goes the whole length and they, they run that all the time.
Right.
So, why wouldn't we do that instead of the path around the field?
This was when they sit down to do the design meetings, they talked about wish lists that the PE, so they met with all the PE teachers, the athletic directors, the coaches and said, what could be of help for you if this were to be, it can't be an athletic field for practicing like right after school, but maybe in the late summer when we need extra practice space because we only have the one field now? And what could also help the programming? So, all the PE teachers have to have the kids run their timed miles, so this will have an actual scope to it of how long this is. It'll be level, it won't be undulating. So, this really played into a big one for not only the coaches that, for our little track teams, but for also for the daily work that's done outside on the field with our PE program, our physical education programming. And, you know, it's much safer for the kids to have something that's even and balanced and, and scoped out, so this'll be a really, you know, flat, level field and we don't have that now. And as well as the track that goes around it will be level and it'll be measured.
Do you have a question?
I had a question, I, I, I really don't care about it, but the people, but the people whose names are on the bricks might care about it, I was wondering what you're doing with those bricks.
Yes, the bricks we're pulling up, we're holding and potentially using them somewhere, maybe for this future gathering space. We have, we have them, we're not gonna get rid of them. Because those names of those are dedicated, so we will never do that, but we are gonna pull them up, resurface that area and find another home for those bricks.
You could give one back, I could take it home.
I just have a couple of questions. And by the way, people paid money for those bricks?
Yeah.
So, we would have, you know, we don't, and some of them have been within the past few years, so we wouldn't, it would be good to understand kind of when they're getting back in, 'cause that might be important to some people that bought a brick for their kid who's graduating in a year or whatever.
Okay.
So, something to think about. Do you mind coming back to the slide that had the budget numbers on it?
Sure.
And thank you for this, this is very helpful, so...
This one?
Yeah, I think that's it. The overage we're gonna have, I mean, overage is kind of, but a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and thousand and cents we have, which some of it will be able to use for these add alternates.
If we don't take the added alternates, you'll have a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars.
And if we, if we use those, we'll still have some money left over.
Correct, can I go, you want to see the next slide?
No, I, my question is kind of broad, I just wanted to understand that and then, so legally, what can we use that for? It has to be used for something related to this project, correct?
Athletic fielding, it has to be, it has, so, the original synthetic turf was considered athletic fielding, so it has to be somehow related to athletic fielding.
Okay.
So, everything we've done has, has something to do with outside play, recess.
Right, so would a parkour be something in that category then? 'Cause a parkour that would connect the two campuses could be a great way for kids from both schools to exercise, totally fund the community and, and it would connect both schools.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna have that kind of money.
Well, not that, but you've got...
I'm picturing a bridge coming over.
How would you do that?
You've got a lot of money. Do you know what a parkour is?
No, no idea.
Yeah.
Parkour is like a, you know, it's like a trail through a park or, you know, you could do it in existing sort of space and then it has obstacles, like exercise stations that, you know, might be a pull-up station, is a, you know, sit-up station, like there's all different, like there's the parallel bar thing, so it's all different things, so it's a, it's a type of workout that's better than just running, 'cause you're breaking that.
Yeah, East Hampton has one, I wonder if they get some use.
Yeah, it's great. It'd be so cool to have it here, in fact, people had mentioned it, you know, years ago when we were in the early stages of the synthetic field.
Yeah, I think at some point, after the project is done, we'll know how much money is actually left over with the contingencies or anything else, but we'll have to figure out what to do with it.
Yeah, so I just have, I just have one, two more, a couple of questions.
Yep, go for it.
So, I ask that because if we have additional money, you wanna make sure you get everything done that you had already committed to, extra money and even if we do some of the alternative, the alternatives, it is extra money, that can be held and over a couple of years, we'll be able to think, if ideas come up that can be embedded and get committed to, we can leverage that if there's any additional funds, correct?
Yeah, font will help for a while.
Right, that's so, which is good, so we're not, the clock isn't ticking, like in the next year, we gotta figure all of this out, let's just get this built and then we can see what's left over to do more. And, yeah, I would just, in terms of the gravel walkway, I just think it'll be helpful to really understand what that looks like, because I think most of us that are, have been exposed to that thing, when a small child falls on it, they hurt their knee and then it hurts. So, if there's, and I, and I, we're working with experts, if they're recommending this, I believe them. It'll just be important, I think, that people understand that their child, if the child is running and trips on this, they're not gonna, you know, they're not gonna be bruising their knee.
I'll reach out to the architect, I'll get some samples, maybe some photos and I'll get to give, show it to you at the next meeting.
My, my, it's pea gravel and it's like, instead of sand.
Oh, like it's that small?
No, 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 it's...
It's broad though, but pea gravel is small round rocks.
But it's, it's, the way it's made is that...
Matt, could you have some more information to share, were you part of those conversations?
Well, I, I guess, I feel like the term gravel may be a misnomer here.
Okay.
We've used, we've used crushed, crushed stone is what the landscapers have referred to, the material that makes up our current path. So, it's more of like a, a stone dust, I would, I would say, and, and it's purposely used because over time, it, it's compacted to a, almost like a hardpan, but has enough give. It's not, not little pieces of gravel by any means. So, may, maybe, maybe they're referring to a different product, but currently, we have like a crushed stone.
That's, that's how the architect put it as, as the add alternate, but what Mr. Malone is saying is, is correct, it's gonna be a crushed stone, so it's not gonna be loose pebble that's gonna fly into the grass and when you cut the grass, it's nothing like that.
And when, and when first installed, they did use a compactor and compacted that dust down.
Thank you for that question.
And the last question, thank you, the, the multi-purpose court, 'cause the slide went by fast, was that a late September unveiling?
Oh, no, that's August thirty-first.
Oh, so it'll be ready for students when they come back to school?
Yes.
Fantastic, thank you.
Not the, not the whole, the field?
No, it's the only, the only thing is the, is the field. It just has to, yeah, literally the sod in either late summer, early fall, 'cause that's the time you, you would lay fresh sod, so it could root and at least give it a little time so it's not, doesn't get chewed up, but...
So, the preseason that sometimes is held there, like I know Sam used to do preseason the other girls, the training in the summer, that can go somewhere else. They can go behind here probably, right?
We have to find a home for it, yeah.
Where does the welcome back to school picnic with the hot dogs and the hamburgers go?
That's gonna go somewhere around here.
Oh, boy.
It's always a fun day.
And he's more hurt?
Any other, any other question, I think that's it for me.
No, you also have the Pearson Field update.
Yes, I do, that's it for this one, so I'm just gonna switch over to the Pearson Field.
Didn't want you to leave us on that one.
I just wanna say a couple of things, we've been getting some great help from the Bridge. They've been extremely helpful with their knowledge, their expertise, they've helped with helping us do some, a lot of testing, which I'll get into in a second and they've just been really, I could ask any question up there and they have an answer for me and they kinda lead me in the right direction and many thanks to them.
And you can also talk about the grant, or the, the gift that we're getting, another gift.
Yeah, it's a great gift, it's called the moisture meter and it's a device about yea big, about that wide, it has these prongs and you go around the field and you test the moisture of the field, so if it's really dry in the northeast quadrant, I could turn that sprinkler head on and just water that area. And it goes to the cloud and it's a, a big educational piece for, you know, it could be, I mean, with, talking with Mr. Nichols and possibly, you know, with earth science and the watershed and it could really lead into wonderful things.
It was, it was developed by a professor from Penn, Penn State who's gonna donate it, it's cost about thirty-five hundred dollars and they sell it to, you know, to, to different golf courses and he is going to donate it to the school district, again, to thirty-five hundred, and he is even thinking about coming out to teach our students, this professor from Penn State who's all about grass, and, and work with our students to show them and of course us too, how it works, but they use this technology and they gather data upon data upon data, but they use this technology at the Bridge and so he made a phone call, Greg Stanley, to this professor at Penn State who said, not only would I tell them about it, I'll get someone, so great news happening at Safe Harbor.
Amazing, amazing, it really is amazing stuff. So, the Pearson Field, okay, this is the existing aerial view, this is what Pearson Field looked like before my time, during your time, but this is it right here. That's looked, it's completely stripped and being prepped to have sod laid and the irrigation thrown in, recapping, and of course, the finished product, that was sometime, I guess, in late September, October.
Yeah.
So, the testing is really important, this, this is what I've learned from Greg Stanley from the Bridge. We took our, I took a sample of our well water, we brought it to, to the lab and they tested it for us and believe it or not, the well water out here is like so pure, there's like nothing in it, it's amazing. So, the study with this whole probing device that, that the Bridge has turned us on to, it's, well, how do we treat, they treat, you know, how do we treat our soil and how do we test our water, what's going into our soil from the water? So, we're missing a lot of stuff that should be going into our soil because the water's so clear. Potassium, magnesium, calcium, calcium carbonate, all organic materials, it's seaweed, shellfish, limestone, all these, this is what we're adding back into our soil here on Pearson Field. Once again, the moisture reading, we go around, we talk sampling, it's really a cool device, it's a lot of fun to play with. So, this is what we're doing to prep for the spring, to get our fields to snap back and look beautiful. We had a very long winter, you know, we could, we can't start anything till April first as far as treating anything with organic material per the state, but it's been a long winter, so the, the ground is still heaving and, and, you know, defrosting so to speak, 'cause it, we haven't, it was just longer than expected this year. This is a real cut, it, as opposed to a rotary cut, we, these are some friends of ours that came down and helped us out from the Bridge and said, this is what you need to do and we'll, we'll help you out and guide you in the right direction. We're, we're also rolling the field to get it nice and flat. And then, we aerate, which we did today, they came around eight inch times, it would go down, our sprinkler lines are twelve, a foot down, twelve inches, this is going down eight inches and it's poking holes in the field, so when we add our potassium, magnesium and our organic fertilizers and treatment, we're gonna throw it in and it's gonna go right to the roots and before you know it, this field is gonna look fantastic.
Marcus, is that the Bridge's machine that they brought here?
They brought it here, they brought it there.
They brought it here, that's so great.
They, they brought up the machine, they brought, this is theirs too, it's, I gotta tell you, they're phenomenal, just, I, thank you, thank you.
Is that, is that a robot?
This thing, that is a, it's a very low, and it has these reels on it that, that just cuts the, cuts in one direction, as opposed, it's a, yeah, it's a great, it's a one-ward. And then the other one's a roller, it goes side by side and I got some video, I didn't put it on, but I should've.
But are they remote, are they...
No, no, there's a, there's a person on it, yeah, 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 we don't put faces.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's a nice little piece of equipment right there. So, yeah, it's gonna look great, I think the field's gonna snap back, you know, we'll talk about this in another two weeks and we'll see how it looks, so...
We do, we are letting, the students are all on the field, there are gonna be a few places where, where like the lacrosse are gonna have their goals that we're gonna start protecting moving forward and we, and Greg Stanley has also let us know, we do need to have it rest this summer though.
Yeah, summer's the heat, it's the heat of the day and that's what, that's a killer for the grass.
So, it will be closed again in the summer to, to the community so it can rest?
Yes. Yes.
Is that every summer it has to be closed?
Well, this is kind of new, because it's a year, it hasn't been a year yet since the sod.
So, in future summers, it'll be open. This is just getting going.
Once it's fully rooted, it's going to be beautiful.
It'll be open for, for fall sports, you know, so in, towards the end of...
August 18th, that's when the field's open. That's when soccer comes back, and so they'll be playing on August 18th. So, it's really a month.
Yeah, but this is a really, it's still a brand, it's brand new sod still, you know, it hasn't had that full year. So, that was his recommendation, is we let it rest during, you know, July.
Yeah, I mean, we'll be on that soon enough, right? Eric, we'll be on there, August 18th is the start of soccer?
Yep, and to give it the, some more time to take, we could probably push things back a little bit.
Oh, we'll see.
Till we start, till we start playing campus.
Marcus is doing a wonderful job. I can't thank him enough for the work he's done with that, so.
Any other questions about the vote?
I have one, in all sincerity. If, if the bridge wasn't as generous and graceful as there being, then how would we have accomplished this task? Where in our budget?
We have it.
Do we have the money hidden to rent these machines and do all this work to this carefree, natural, organic, beautiful grass, dirt island we got out there?
We don't have the roller or that reel cutter. That's just a bonus from the bridge. But, you know, I've worked in a couple of many school, a couple of school districts, and they don't have that equipment either. So, the best of our ability would be to, you know, we would cut it with a normal, we have, we have an aerator, we have a, it's called an, an airverter drain, that's what it's called. And it does the same thing. It doesn't go down eight inches, it only goes down four inches. So, we're, you know, we're gaining a little, you know, it's just really nice that we have this relationship, but we do have it in our budget to do that. But now, we're going to be taking care of Pearson Hill and the other fields as well. We're going to be aerating those as well, we're going to be, you know, putting on organic fur, corn gluten, and maglite, which is all organic materials on the field. So, you're going to see some nice stuff around graduation time, you know, the grass in the bridge.
Stephanie, the bridge had offered this as part of the package. So, when we all voted for this, we knew that that was going to be part of the package, it was one of the benefits. And nobody ever said these fields were going to be carefree, and nor would synthetic be carefree either, but...
We just went up there and asked the question to the bridge, and I got to tell you, it was amazing.
Question, and I, and this is very exciting, and thank you again, bridge people, because it's wonderful that we have this. So, starting next fall, we feel like it's going to be agreed in a more sustainable way, in a usual way, twelve months a year. You know, give or take, giving a rest here or there, whichever you do. I know last fall, we were challenged with some extra water on the field and flooding. It was a wet fall, but that being said, some games had to be canceled. That, that was fixed, right? The flooding issue?
Well, I wasn't here last year, but we did discuss some areas on the, what is that, the south side of the field? On the, is that the visitor's side, I believe, right?
Yep.
We had some, some issues there as well. We're hoping with our, with our aerating, that we're going to have better drainage over there.
So, that'll, that'll address the problem?
Will help. We also met with the architects afterwards, and I guess, we have our maintenance shed over here, all right, and we have some leaders that come down. And so, when the rain hits the roof, it hits the leaders, and it rushes down to your soccer goal on this side. There was discussion about putting a dry well in there to absorb the water, so the water would have a place to go, instead of running out into the field. We are still in the process of getting numbers on that, and if we could pull that off this summer, we might be able to make that happen. It's not expensive. It's, you know, a couple of rings, we go down about eight feet, and we're, you know.
So, that next year, it should be drier for the soccer players?
I would think so, yeah. I mean, I was, I was sure I was, had my eyes on it, but...
I'm going to send them along to come back on, let's say, April 23rd.
Any other questions on the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Well, I also, can I make one note, for those of you in the audience, the handouts do not have Marcus's numbers. So, if you're looking for the correct numbers, it'll be online. You have the VBS estimates. So, he actually has the bid numbers.
I didn't mention that.
And all this time, I thought you were perfect.
So, is that all the superintendent's report?
Yep.
Excellent, excellent, excellent. All right, so, at this time, I'd like to move into the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve consent agenda items? One through two?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Questions carried? Before we jump into, well, you know what, never mind. Let's do it at the discussion section. Can I get a motion to approve policy action number three?
So moved.
Second? Thank you. Did I get a second?
No.
No.
Second.
Thank you. So, I just want to, this is the second read of the policy for students with life-threatening conditions, and all of you have a copy of that policy on your desk. One of the things that came up last time was, so I just wanted to have the conversation about it while the discussion is on the floor, about the scope of this policy, as to whether it was restricted to just athletic buses, or whether it was restricted to all busing and all transportation. Were there board members on the committee that worked on this policy? Can you shed some light on what the scope of the policy is meant to cover?
It does not cover everyday transportation to and from school. It's just for athletic, no, I'm sorry, not athletic, it's just for varsity activities, and for long-term...
It needs to do with long-term trips, where they can't stop.
This is not in the mornings and regular pickup and drop-off.
So, it's a little bit more than athletics, but it's not every ridership moment, right?
No, I meant varsity.
Did we change the language?
It's, it's number thirteen, where it says, "The protocol should be utilized when field trips require students to eat en route on the bus." So, I think that's the, that's the capture.
So, that you're talking about the thirteen, that's...
Or is it eight?
The...
No, it's eight. I'm sorry, eight.
Eight, okay. So, this is under the heading, "Creating an allergen-safe school environment", and then it's got A through H. Sorry, there's no page numbers. And then, as subcategories under H, I through B, I, 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 right, one through eight. The last one was the one that we added to make sure the scope was for long...
Yes.
Long road trips.
Yes, so the protocol should be utilized when field trips require students to eat en route on the bus. We're considering those to be, and when, you know, practical, so we, you know, if you have a long, a field trip, and the students need to eat, so the most practical thing is get off the bus, eat. We're, you know, the kids love to be able to eat out if they can, because they don't, we eat very often. So, they have favorite places to eat, pizza products, whatever, eat there, then get back on the bus with no food. But we try to be as kind of specific as possible in the, in the notes. So, and it does seem to play more to sports, because those are the students that are most often on the bus, and needed that to be clarified for them, for them to...
So, guys, a priority for that, then? But it's not, I guess I was confused when I read it. It sounded like it was just for, it references junior varsity and varsity away events. But it's beyond that? It's that, and any other student body that's going in a long distance on a bus?
Yep.
Is it meant to include both?
So, that's why we have the number, number eight, is these protocols should be utilized when field trips require students to eat en route on a bus.
I guess my concern is what defines that? Meaning, you know, if someone's going an hour to a math league contest, a violent, like, how is it determined that it's required for students to eat and run a bus? Because I can tell you, students right now, eating on a bus without any intel that it's required or not.
They shouldn't be.
I know they shouldn't be, but I know that they are. And I know many parents don't even know that the kids shouldn't be. So, that, that's a communication case I'm sure you'll, that you'll address. But it's more, this just seems so general, that unless there's a, unless we understand how this is applied, we won't know whether we're complying with it or not, or whether it should, whether it should be applied or not. I mean, we have math league, we have model UN, we have the bus trip, you know, going here. I mean, there's many times when our students, tomorrow our students go to Riverhead Jail. So, I'm just wondering how it will be determined, and who determines that?
I think this is one of those times when we delegate this to the athletic director, and to the two principals, and to the transportation director.
Okay.
Because she, she trains her people. The, the two principals train their people. They can't, nobody goes on a field trip without the principal's eyes on the form, on the field trip request, without the, the transportation, the head of bus, the eyes on it, MI is on it. But, again, this is just going to be another layer of where we're going to have to do training, so everyone understands it.
But it sounds, but it sounds like, you know, it's determined who will make this decision, that's all, which is good.
So, the advisors all have to know this.
Right, and varsity activities, that's why we changed it to activities instead of athletic. So, it includes robotics, and model UN, and any other groups that may be traveling long distance.
Are there any middle, for JV and varsity are basically high school, right?
Yeah.
Are there any middle school applications besides the field trip?
When, or is it just means that you could travel? When we reviewed with all the stakeholders, the stakeholders felt that there should not be any situations where middle schoolers were, were eating on the bus.
Although, so sixth grade, for example, was going all the way to Mystic, so that's a very long trip.
Yeah, and when they went on the ski trip, they ate off the bus, and then got on the bus. And that was a five-hour trip, right?
Right.
So, there's, there's long trips, and food was provided, and it was, you eat, and then you get on the bus. And I think that kind of goes back to, you know, everybody's kind of got to be aware of, of what the rules are now. And if I'm a chaperone on a trip, I need to be aware of what the rules are. And if it's mandatory that they eat, these are my options. If it's not mandatory they eat, there's no eating on the bus.
So, what is the concern about having middle schoolers eat on the bus for a long trip?
Because you have an even younger, first of all, they rarely go on long trips. And so, the advisors are put in that much more of a difficult situation, because it's now self-determining how difficult it is to watch little tiny people. Do you ever get on a bus?
You can't see.
Well, but we're talking about sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, though.
Right, and some over sixth, seventh, and eighth graders are this big. So, you know, we always want to reduce risk.
And remember, this, this, we made this exception based on the fact that the kids didn't have any time before they were leaving school and getting to competitions.
So, when they do that, they should build in time.
Okay. My only other question with the language in this, is that it talks about that coaches will do something when they have, when they're, when they're, the athletes are on the bus. And I, and maybe I missed it, is there a reference to the advisors or supervisors on the bus that aren't coaches, because it's not an athletic turf?
No, you know what? You're right, that is missing from, we should put coach slash advisor, there should be an amendment to it. That's a good catch.
That's page three, number one.
Do you want to say advisor, is that what you want to say?
Coach slash advisor, yeah.
I was looking at the fifth page, just as referenced in the fifth page to...
Yeah, that's where I am.
Yeah.
Chaperone better?
Chaperone is, I think a better, right, advisor. But anyway, there may be other places that it, that it should be in here, but...
Doesn't chaperone do something else?
It should never just be specific to someone.
Well, I think when, when they go, the only reason I set it down is whether they go on a music trip, or robotics, or the model UN, or on the way to the airport to go to Squid, it's a chaperone that accompanies them.
But the clause that we're talking about is that they receive training, and chaperones, like, from an athletic standpoint, a coach might have chaperones, that might just be a parent, and they're not necessarily, at the beginning of the year, going to get trained and have maneuvering epipen use.
But advisors should.
Advisors should.
Advisors, yeah, you're right.
Do we have parents with chaperones on these long trips?
DC or anything?
I thought we didn't allow it as a district.
Oh, I don't know.
I think, we don't allow it as a district.
I was just thinking about my...
But they had parents on the ski, the sixth grade ski trip. Was that a school trip?
Mm-hmm, it was a school trip. And they traveled with them?
Yes, they traveled with them on the bus.
There you go.
Right, that's why it shouldn't be chaperones.
My understanding is, we're not supposed to be doing that, so I was surprised with that.
Yeah.
It happened to be, you know, one of the parents is a very good skier and does, yeah, kid rescue, so I was actually glad that that parent happened to be on. But I just thought it was interesting that the policy is that we're not supposed to.
Are there any other questions on this policy?
Oh, you know, just one little weird thing. I just think the title's weird if it's the issue with, if it's really addressing it because of the busing, although obviously there's a lot of other stuff in here related to the school, so...
Well, the complaint comes from the fact that creating an allerg-